All City Council will come to order. Roll call.
Tolbert, Busuri, Jalali Nelson, Naker, Prince, Tao, Council President Bren Moyn, five present, two absent, being Council Members Busuri and Tao. Council Member Tao is excused.
Please stand if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Consent agenda items one through 14 are before you for your consideration.
My understanding is that we will be taking item 14 separately. Is there anything else that should be considered outside of the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item number 14, Resolution 19-963, approving adverse action against liquor on sale and gambling location licenses held by JC and MTM Inc. doing business as Johnny's Baby at 981 University Avenue West. Sorry.
Outside of the parentheses. So this matter actually needs a public hearing and so we're going to request a layover until July 10th so that we can properly notice the public hearing. And so it will be republished to that date of July 10th if folks are willing to help us out here. So there's a motion for a layover to July 10th. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is laid over to public hearing on July 10th at 5:30. Item number 15, Resolution 19-1021, celebrating the 50th anniversary of Stonewall in June 2019 Pride Month.
And Ms. Nelson?
Great, thank you so much. I'm really excited to introduce a resolution commemorating Pride Month in the city of St. Paul and we have some community members who would like to come up and join me in reading the resolution into the record. And also anyone in the audience who wants to participate is very welcome to come up to the podium and we'll just read the whereas's, as I call them, one by one into the record. So I'll be right up there.
Great. Great. Do you want to just go like one at a time down?
Sure.
All right. Great. This is our St. Paul City Council Resolution celebrating the 50th anniversary of Stonewall and our June 2019 Pride Month. Whereas June 28, 2019 marks the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall Riots and?
Whereas the Stonewall Riots marked a turning point in LGBTQ history when black trans women and other trans people of color in New York fought back against police who invaded their safe spaces to arrest them for their sexual orientation and gender expression. And?
Whereas this moment launched a resistance centered on the dignity and rights of gender queer people of color in the face of state violence and disenfranchisement. And?
Whereas the legacy of Stonewall will persist because it must. And?
Whereas we must continue to protect our most vulnerable voices and thread them into our collective narrative from Stonewall to present so that our young black trans women can hear their voice in our history. And?
Whereas in 2013, Minnesotans legislators and Governor Dayton passed same-sex marriage, allowing our neighbors, friends, and family the most fundamental human right to be written into state law, the ability to marry who you love. And?
Whereas despite continued progress, our transgender community continues to fight for safety, justice, and acceptance.
Whereas LGBTQ people in our city and country have achieved significant milestones ensuring that future generations of LGBTQ people will enjoy a more equal and just society.
And whereas despite being marginalized throughout the history of the United States, the LGBTQ community continues to celebrate their identities, love, and contributions in various expressions of pride.
Now therefore be it resolved, the St. Paul City Council recognizes the 50th anniversary of Stonewall Riots and will continue the conversation around LGBTQ issues and work to ensure their justice provides their community wholeness and acceptance. Be it further?
Be it further resolved, the St. Paul City Council celebrates June 2019 Pride Month in humble solidarity. Thank you so much, everyone.
I guess we can leave that. Thank you for reading that and for the, and Hua Zhang for the special decoration. And maybe after our meeting, we can take a few pictures with the prop as well. Thanks for bringing this forward. I know there was a lot of collaboration on putting this resolution in to Legisar and a lot of thought went into it, so I appreciate that. And for Hua Zhang and Mitra, I think worked real hard on this. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor. I know there's lots of cool events in honor of the 50th anniversary of Stonewall, including one at the History Center and of course, Pride this weekend should be a blast. So thank you for bringing that forward. Any further comments on this before we go? Mr. Tolbert?
I'll just say, thank you for bringing this forward. It was a great resolution. Tyler Blackman, since he didn't say your name into the record, I'll say it. Thank you for coming down here and reading it with us. We've come, we've come a long way in the last 50 years, but we still have a lot to do and I think that's why we continue to celebrate Pride Month and Pride Parade and other things. I think it's awesome that we have six co-authors on this, on this resolution. It says a lot.
Yep. Great. Ms. Nelson?
I want to just thank everyone here to be part of this moment and also wanted to just lift up that today our mayor also proclaimed it Juneteenth Day in the city of St. Paul and looking forward to hearing more about how we can commemorate that important event. But thank you for weaving these together and for commemorating this and look forward to passing this resolution.
All right. So I'm going to take that as a motion on the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 16, Resolution Public Hearing 19-40, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Services Program, Mill and Overlay, Striker Avenue. Public hearing was held on April 3rd.
I am, just in the entrance, interest of clarity, I'm going to ask that we table items 16 through 19 until there's a public work staff, person in this room that can help make a report on this. So let us move on to item number 20.
Item, I'm sorry. Item number 20, Resolution Public Hearing 19-167, adopting the Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area Chapter for St. Paul for All 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
All right. And then this matter was laid over following its public hearing on June 5th and is before us today for a final vote. Ms. Prince?
And I would like to offer an amendment as, and it's version two that is in Legisar. It does, the version two of the amendment does two things. One is it includes the amendment that we passed two weeks ago, which just adds a policy saying that we will seek opportunities to clean up polluted sites like Pig's Eye, which had not been in the original draft. And then the other change in version two is simply a technical amendment. It's restoring some language that had been implicit. So it makes the language on page 226 of the plan more explicit without changing the meaning of the paragraph. We have staff support on both of these changes and Ms. Thompson prepared this version two for us today.
And can you clarify? You just said that it is re-adding some language that was implicit? What does that mean?
Yeah, there was a, well, I don't have the language. Oh, I handed off all my copies. Could I just see that?
I just don't, I don't, that combination of words confuses me.
Yeah, there was a, I don't, is Ms. Thompson here? Would you be willing to speak to that? It was raised by Friends of the Parks and Trails that we had taken some language from, I believe, the Friends of the Mississippi River, but we had left out some words that pertain to criteria that each of the policies needs to meet. It was just restoring that policy language. But in any event.
Council President Bren Moyn, council members, that's basically it. The phrase, the second point under in version two, the second amendment, all of that is underlined, but the planning commission is recommending most of that language already to you. The part that, so I shouldn't have underlined everything, but the part that's new that Council Member Prince is introducing is the phrase, "The city will utilize the criteria provided in the MRCCA rules to evaluate potential visual impacts of additional height and if/when mitigation is needed." And the reason that was actually asked of FMR, Friends of the Mississippi River, for the planning commission to change, the planning commission incorporated everything else that's underlined there, but not that phrase because we advised them that no matter what, we have to, we have to follow the Merka rules. So we just left that out at the planning commission level, but Council Member Prince was asking that it come back in. So that's kind of the implicit understanding is that, of course, we have to follow Merka rules. So we didn't think it was necessary to put it in the document, but there was still continued interest by FMR and I think Friends of the Parks and Trails to just be very clear about that, that we will use the Merka criteria when we consider variances. So it's just stating what we'd have to do anyway.
Okay. Okay. So I don't, I don't have a quarrel with the content here per se, but I do, I mean, not only is this coming into us at the, after the public hearing and at the fourth reading plus a layover, but it sounds like it's not even presented as, like, we're looking at only one sentence is an amendment, not the information before and after it. So this, it just feels pretty haphazard to me and I'm not fully supportive of voting for this for that reason right now, not that I disagree with your content per se. I just, it just feels very 11th hour. It's something that was not in there, not in there and now it's back in and then again, this is incomplete information. So I do have some concerns. Ms. Prince?
What I will say is that as, as we learned when I made the amendment at our last meeting on this, which was June 5th, was that city, Assistant City Attorney Peter Warner advised us to make the changes after the public hearing. That was his advice to us. I believe it went out in an email, but in any event, I think Ms. Thompson could speak to that. We checked with him, should it be submitted before the public hearing or after the public hearing? The, I'm not sure what you're suggesting is incomplete here because this is?
I guess I shouldn't say incomplete. I mean that there's?
This is an amend, this is a version two that was prepared by staff.
Ms. Thompson just said that the underlined part is not the amendment. The amendment is, it's within the underlined section. And clarified. Okay. I just, Ms. Naker?
Just a point of order, to make sure I'm understanding correctly. Are we, there are two amendments that were passed out. Are we only talking right now about the Mississippi River?
Yeah, the other one is the comp plan.
Okay, so that'll become, okay.
Mr. Tolbert?
What words are we voting in, in this amendment?
Sorry for the confusion, everybody. The planet, the version that you got of the document already has some of this language in it because the planning commission recommended it. So we just put it in there as part of what you're already reviewing. So the new language that is not already in the document, and it's my apologies, all of that shouldn't have been underlined because some of it's already in the document, so that's my error. The part that is new in your resolution is that under number two, "The city will utilize the criteria provided in the Merka rules to evaluate potential visual impacts of additional height and if/when mitigation is needed." And then in some cases, that is the new language. Everything else there that's underlined is already in this document.
Mr. Tolbert?
And Ms. Thompson, the, what you said is this new language is duplicative from?
Pardon me?
It wasn't, this language wasn't in the original because it's assumed because it's state law that we would have to follow, obviously. And so it's in some ways duplicative?
Yeah, so let me step back just a minute. So at the planning commission public hearing, Friends of the Mississippi River asked that all of this language be added, everything that you see underlined under number two. The planning commission added everything except for the phrase that I just read. So they incorporated most of what FMR had recommended, but did not incorporate the new phrase that's underlined for you because we advised the planning commission that we would have to follow state law anyway and we didn't think that it was necessary language. But there continued to be concern that that language was not in the plan, so it was brought forward at your public hearing to kind of put it back in so that the full recommended statement from FMR is now what you see in front of you with that additional phrase.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yeah. With that being said, I mean, what the intent of this is, is to, is already there. I do get worried about adding language that we've all, that at least I saw, you know, 15 minutes ago for the first time with the potential unintended consequences of words in there that might mean something that we didn't intend it to mean. So I, I don't think we need this amendment and I think the potential for it having unintended consequences outweighs the need for it in the first place and I'll be, I'm going to be voting against it.
Thank you. Ms. Naker? I'm sorry. Okay. All right. And then I, yeah. And I think, and there's another amendment before us and I think we'll take those separately. So Ms. Prince would move version two, version two in Legisar with the amendment somewhat like what is in point two and one is, looks like it's accurate. Is there any further discussion on this amendment? All right. Let's do a roll call. Vote, all in favor, or, roll call.
Tolbert?
No.
Busuri?
Yes.
Jalali Nelson?
Yes.
Naker?
Yes.
Prince?
Yes.
Tao, oh, I'm sorry. Council President Bren Moyn?
No.
For in favor to oppose, those being Council Members Tolbert and Bren Moyn, the amendment is approved.
Okay. And I, so with the amended version in front of us now, we will take a final vote on the Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted as amended. Item number 21, Resolution Public Hearing 19-128, adopting St. Paul for All 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. Pertaining to the public hearing that we had on the comp plan, the majority of testimony that we received pertained to strengthening the language pertaining to trying to meet the 30% area median income in our housing policies in the plan. And so I've done some work on this. Council Member Nelson and Council Member Naker and I met with staff and we talked over a number of potential amendments. And the one that we are, that I am bringing forward as myself is to add to housing policy number 32, to add to financially assisted the language, including land write downs, which would just be more intentional about what we count as financial assistance. I did send this out to all of you. It was one of the alternatives on the memo and I recognize that we didn't have an opportunity to speak about it. I had a really good conversation with Ms. Shookman at PED and she is supportive of this language and so I'm bringing it forward.
Good. Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I really appreciate the diligence that you've put into this, Ms. Prince, and I, I'm going to support this amendment. I think a land write down is financial assistance by another name and so I, I think this makes a lot of sense. I know that there are other things that we talked about and that many in this council want to do to go further in terms of providing especially 30% median income affordable housing that we weren't able to get into the comp plan, that I didn't feel comfortable putting in at this late point when we didn't have time for more public input, but I really hope that those ideas can come forward again when we talk about an inclusionary zoning policy and other types of efforts like that this year. So I'm going to be voting in support.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Prince. Since we didn't have an opportunity to talk about this or since I got it 15 minutes ago, I didn't have a chance to talk to staff about it either. Would this only apply to land write downs for housing development?
Yeah. It would be housing, housing developments that we assist with financial assistance or with a reduced price on land.
Okay. It would for sure not touch if we did a land write down on industrial commercial development, creating jobs, because I can see that causing a lot of issues with them trying to put 30% AMI into an industrial project.
No, this is in the housing chapter.
And that would, are we sure about that, Ms. Thompson or Ms.
That is my understanding as well. We do have some, quickly wrote up some clarifying language if you'd like to add it, that I think just says what Council Member Prince is trying to say and I could read that if you'd like.
Sure. I would be curious what that is.
So including land write down, which is already the proposed language, and then we would say for projects that will include housing units.
That would be potentially, if Ms. Prince is acceptable to it, a friendly amendment to your amendment? Could you read that one more time? So we can write it down?
Sure. So the added language would be including land write down for projects that will include housing units.
Has that been reviewed by the city attorney's office to ensure that it's only touching what we intended to touch?
No. We, we just created the language, but I, I think that is, in my opinion, it's just clarifying the intent of the policy as initially
This one, just similar to the one previous, I fully agree. I mean, this is a value of the entire council to expand access to affordable housing at deep affordability levels and so I do agree with that. But I, yesterday, there was a different amendment floating around that was quite dissimilar to this one and now just a little bit ago, this one came in with land write down and I, it might be a good policy, but again, after two years of looking at this comp plan, to come in with a change like this is, makes me a bit uncomfortable without having the opportunity to hear from staff. I, you indicated that Kayla is supportive of this. I don't know if she's just not against it or if she's supporting it because she's not here.
She is here.
Oh. Not to put you on the spot, but I mean, we're, we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants here on a two-year project.
Do you have any?
Council President Bren Moyn, Council Member Prince, staff, staff is in agreement that land write down counts as city assistance and, you know, feel that that was the intent as originally written, but are in support of adding clarification if, if it was not clear to the policy. We would, we would be okay with this revision as clarified by Lucy.
All right. That's helpful. Thank you. And it seems similar then to the previous amendment we discussed that it's, it's, it is implied, but this is to make it explicit. Okay. Any other, there's, there sounds like a friendly amendment to, was agreed to. Is there any further discussion on the amendment in front of us? Mr. Tolbert?
Okay. I can, I actually, sorry. So I am sort of in a similar position of I had seen a different version and now sitting here and reacting to what is a slightly different one from that one and so I'm just still catching up. I just want to confirm I'm reading the intention behind it correctly and what it would mean in impact and implementation. So it says, "Continue to use city and HRA resources to support affordable rental housing citywide with at least 30% of the total rental units," and then everything here. So is this meaning that top line globally bundled up, we have 10% of all units at 30%, 10% at 50%, or is it project by project? Like, that's what, is it meant to be the macro or is it meant to be that every project has to meet this breakdown? That's the piece I just want to double check.
Ms. Prince?
This is in the aggregate. We didn't change the project by project language.
Okay. Thank you. And so to connect to what our housing director just shared, the clarification being made is just that a land write down is a form of city assistance and the friendly amendment Council Member Tolbert is bringing is to specify for housing units. Am I clocking all that? Okay. Okay. I feel better getting my questions answered. I don't feel great having to number crunch all this. This is kind of stressful. So I appreciate the time to think through this. I, I don't love making policy like this, but I also now understand what's being proposed. So thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tolbert?
Just a few more questions maybe for either Ms. Shookman or Ms. Thompson. Would this include splinter parcels?
Would it include?
When we help, when we help, if we own a small piece of property and we're helping a developer put together a project, would it include splinter parcels? If there's a land write down, a splinter parcel or is it just included if we sell the entire parcel for development?
I don't think it's the intention for splinter parcels. I think it's where we are giving city assistance for projects that are residential, which are usually larger sites or full sites that are developable, so not splinter parcels.
Do we need to clarify that into the language, do you think?
Not in my mind, but if, if that feels more comfortable to you, we could figure out some language for it.
And I apologize for not, I don't know the answer to this, but I, it, to me, it feels like we're looking at a visionary comp plan and we're getting way, way into the weeds about specifics and how and we're defining different things. And it feels to me that, that these are things that the HRA can take up as a policy very easily, where it's not taught, like, again, where we're not quite sure what it applies to and what it doesn't apply to and is part of the comp plan. Because a comp plan guides our decision-making, but a policy would be how we went forth with our money. So I, I am not going to support this and it is not, again, I think land write down is absolutely a subsidy, but I do, I don't fully think this is vetted. I don't think this is fully vetted. Ms. Naker?
Thank you. Can I, I just want to clarify something that I thought I heard Ms. Shookman say, which is that this is how we currently interpret the policy. This clarifies it, but it, it's not a change. And in that sense, it's okay. And I just want to, it's okay to do it, it's okay to not do it, but like, we're not actually making a big policy change at this late stage at the table. We're clarifying something that's already policy. Is that an accurate way of stating it?
Council Member Naker, that's correct. The comp plan that was drafted includes an appendix of city financial tools and it specifically defines land write down in the appendix.
Mr. Tolbert?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going to, for the same reason I voted against the last one, this might be a good policy. I might be 100% supportive of it, but the, the questions that I asked and kind of the uncertainty and the ability not to have, after a two-year process on this thing, not to be able to have the policy implications that we're having, especially on land, I mean, I, I actually believe that land write down is a subsidy. One of the things about property that we own is we don't have to sell it and we can negotiate how we want to sell it. So it's not that that tool isn't there when that sale is happening, that we can include that. If it's an, an informal policy, it's a little bit more flexible for each project, which is unique. And so I just, again, this is something I generally think I support, but not having it fully vetted, I can't support it because it fully vetted, I can't support it because I don't want to potentially put something, unintended consequence into this process, which has been vetted by the community and many recommend it in our body multiple times.
Okay. Any other discussion on this amendment, this friendlierly amended amendment? Okay. Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment. Tolbert?
No.
Busuri?
Yes.
Janelle Nelson?
No.
Naker?
Yes.
Prince?
Yes.
Council President Brenmoen?
No.
Three in favor, three opposed, the motion fails. Okay. So are there any other amendments or anything else before we head to a final vote? Okay. And I am going to have our vote and then yield the floor for a moment or two to Ms. Thompson with some, you know, thoughts post-vote. All right. So if there's no further discussion on this item, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. Council President Brenmoen, councilmembers, just to stop and recognize the importance of this moment, that we have a new comp plan, or I should say, you have completed your work on it, we now have to send it on to that council for final review. If there are any changes that are made, requested by them, it will come back to you. But I want to recognize the team who's here. We've been working on this for four years, so it takes a long time to really think about the future of our city, and we've engaged 2,300 people at least at 70-some events, so it's been a really good process, and we've worked really hard on it. So appreciate your support all the way through, and congrats to St. Paul.
And Lucy, huge congratulations to you. I know this morning we were muttering, you know, about your plans for future, and we're just, your leadership on this has been wonderful. The amount of engagement you got on this plan, it just really, I bet, I mean, there's no historic, any process really that's probably even come close to that level of engagement. It's a wonderful work product. You've worked very hard in this and many other endeavors, so I think we wanted to also make, take a moment to recognize you and your leadership, and thank you so much. Thank you. Okay. We are going to skip backwards to item number 16.
Item number 16, Resolution Public hearing 19-40, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Millan Overlay Stryker Avenue.
And I think now we have staff in the house. And we, obviously, this is something that's been laid over since April, and we've worked a lot on it, and so I think it's important to just be clear what we're doing with these resolutions and what we're doing following the passage of these resolutions.
Council President Brenmoen, councilmembers, we can certainly respond to a question. I'm not sure if you want us to speak to a particular item on 16.
I guess, maybe tell me if I'm right. On items number 16 through 19, and we're looking at item 16 right now, but we'll go through the rest of them, we are ratifying the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Millan Overlay Program for particular project areas, and there is a new revised assessment role that is attached to each of these resolutions.
That is correct.
Okay. And each resolution is modified to match our policy, and there will be adjustments made to bills, whether they were paid or if they're still pending, to match that adjustment. No one's bill will go up, but some bills will go down.
That is also correct.
Okay.
Yes. We can say that the resolutions that were laid over, have been laid over, that we have changed the assessment rates based on the revised policy of 50% to charge to property owners for the Millan Overlay work only. So the new rates reflect that amount, and there are people who have already paid. The ones who have not paid are reflected in the revised assessment roles that are before you today. The ones that have already paid have overpaid, probably most all of them. It's a little bit over 100, and so we will, we've already calculated the refund amounts, and we will be issuing refunds to them at some point in the near future.
Okay. And then for, in reference to items number 3, 4, 5, 6, which were passed on the consent agenda, we've withdrawn the other projects that were passed for 2018, and we'll bring them back before the council for another public hearing and a vote with a modified assessment role.
That is correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I just didn't want to say that without having you here to verify that that was correct, and I, we have talked to colleagues about the path to get here, and so I thank you very much for that. All right. So we're going to take 16, 17, 18, and 19 separately. We did have a public hearing and closed it. Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I wanted to explain just a little bit more about what we've been doing over the last two months, and I really appreciate all of our colleagues' patience while Council President Brenmoen and I dug into this a little bit more. I think we were really moved, I know all of us were, by the testimony that we heard at our public hearing several months ago, and really wanted to do everything we could to reduce the burden of the street maintenance assessments on the individual property owners. And we've, I think, all been trying to find the right way to do this for a long time. We've, over the last couple of months, been exploring all of our options and also analyzing the gap that that would create, because the work in 2018 at least was already done, and we needed to pay for that. And we also looked at how other peer cities are financing this work. And obviously, the two extremes are to charge the full cost of the work to property owners 100% or to charge nothing and put everything out of the general fund or on property taxes. And obviously, there are pros and cons to both of those, and either way, ultimately, it's the property owners in St. Paul that pay. What we're proposing to do and what the revised assessment roles reflect is that we are shifting more of the cost of the street work to the general fund, so that we, so that overall the cost to each property owner is likely to go down, and we are all shouldering more of the burden as taxpayers, because more of it will come out of the general fund. And that's actually, most of our peer cities do more of the assessment, more of the assessment goes to the individual property owner than comes out of the general fund. So our 50-50 policy is actually more generous than many of the cities we looked at. So I continue to be open to figuring out the best way to do this going forward, but I think, given the position that we were at now, the need to make a decision about this, given that the work has already taken place or is about to take place for 2019, I think we reached a really good place, and I'm hopeful that a lot of the residents who contacted us are going to see their bills go down.
Right. And I appreciate the clarification where we, when we compared other cities, it was interesting how many charged 100% for street assessments and then just spread it out over 20 years. So taxes look lower, but your actual tax bill is significantly higher, because there's 100% assessment for a street reconstruction project. So it was a good exercise and worth knowing, and I do agree that our program is generous by comparison. So was a lot of analyzing numbers and moving things around to try to make this work, and I appreciate your leadership and help in that as well. So, again, these four are in front of us today, and then the ones that were withdrawn today will come back to us for a public hearing and a vote, so that all of the 18 assessments will be taken care of. So, any discussion on item number 16? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 17, Resolution Public hearing 19-42, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Millan Overlay Victoria Street.
And this is for us for a final vote? Any last discussion?
Ms. Prince?
I should have brought this up when we were speaking generally about this, but I do want to thank both of you for your work on this, because, and in particular on Victoria, I mean, all of these were difficult, but the hardship was really astonishing to me. And I do think that we need to be looking at this going forward. Again, as I mentioned this morning, when it comes to things like bike lanes, we tell people that they don't own the street in front of their house, but indeed, we charge them a large amount of assessments for maintaining that street in front of their house. So I am really grateful to both of you for your work on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 18, Resolution Public hearing 19-38, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Millan Overlay Arlington Avenue.
This, I will move approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 19, Resolution Public hearing 19-41, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Millan Overlay Forest Street.
And Mr. Busuri moves approval. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 22, Second Reading of Ordinance 19-36, amending Chapter 15 of the Administrative Code to create a process to cancel city council meetings. This ordinance is laid over to July 10 for third reading public hearing. Item number 23, Second Reading of Ordinance 19-37, amending Chapter 76 of the Legislative Code pertaining to sewers and drains by adding new language authorizing the creation of special sanitary sewer availability districts and authorizing the imposition and collection of connection charges within such districts where facilities were constructed in large or improved to manage increased sanitary sewer volume within the district. This ordinance is laid over to July 10 for third reading public hearing. Item number 24, First Reading of Ordinance 19-39, granting authority to the Port Authority to issue and sell general obligation bonds to which the Port Authority pledges the full faith, credit, and resources of the City of St. Paul pursuant to the provisions and by authority of said statutes, Chapters 469 and 475 as amended. This ordinance is laid over to June 26 for second reading.
We have four suspension items. Mr. Tolbert moves suspension of the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Resolution 19-1022, approving the city's cost of providing collection of delinquent garbage bills for service during January to March 2019, and setting date of legislative hearing for July 11, 2019, and city council public hearing for September 11, 2019, to consider and levy the assessments against individual properties.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted.
Mr. Busuri moves suspension of the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Resolution 19-1024, approving the city's cost of providing collection of delinquent garbage bills for service during January to March 2019, and setting date of legislative hearing for July 11, 2019, and city council public hearing for September 11, 2019, to consider and levy the assessments against individual properties.
Mr. Busuri moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing, or the resolution is adopted.
Ms. Prince moves suspension of the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Resolution 19-1025, approving the city's cost of providing collection of delinquent garbage bills for service during January to March 2019, and setting date of legislative hearing for July 11, 2019, and city council public hearing for September 11, 2019, to consider and levy the assessments against individual properties.
And Ms. Nelson moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted.
Ms. Naker moves suspension of the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Resolution 19-1026, approving the city's cost of providing collection of delinquent garbage bills for service during January to March 2019, and setting date of legislative hearing for July 11, 2019, and city council public hearing for September 11, 2019, to consider and levy the assessments against individual properties.
And Ms. Naker moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted. Item number 25, Resolution Public hearing 19-183, authorizing the Department of Public Works asphalt plant to amend the spending and financing budget for the extraordinary professional evaluation of the sediment pond for future operation.
I love that. I just, I know. I want to be there. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 26, Resolution Public hearing 19-178, approving the application of Mongtown Connections, Inc., for sound level variance to present live amplified music for Mongtown Festival on Saturday, June 29 and Sunday, June 30 at 217 Como Avenue.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Even if you just want to say something about how cool it's going to be. Oh, there is.
I got too excited. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me a short time to give a speech. This is the fourth year of the Mongtown Festival. After Mongtown Festival has been coming to Como Avenue, livelihood of the area has been brought up again, and thank you so much. We are here, and like I said always, we are here to stay long, we're here to do whatever we can in terms of helping to stabilize the St. Paul economy and any capacity that we as a small business owner can do to help it out, we are willing to do. And this year, we are doing everything as the same as last year, but we expand one block to, one more block to Rice Street, and everything else is ready. And this year, the only thing that is different this year is that we're asking for our night concert to be adding one hour from 11 to 12 o'clock, because Minnesota in June, 9:30 still not dark. So last year, the people said this is too short of a time, so we add one more hour, and we hope that you will be approved for this festival to go on, as we usually did for the last three years. Thank you so much.
And I would just like to introduce you, Tuah Jong, the owner of the Mongtown Market, and you're here with your wife and son?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it's wonderful. I do want to ask, are you having the amateur wrestling again this year?
Yes.
Okay.
It is live wrestling, and the Mong people have been looking, watching TV for 44 years, and this time, we're actually seeing the live wrestling, and it's so fun. So the audience really appreciates to have these, even though they are costing quite a bit of money, but it's a good feature to have in the festival.
Awesome.
And we wish to have some credible rights in the future. However, in the Upper Midwest here, we have to be in the line for over 67 years in the line, just to reserve for them to come all the way from Georgia or from the Western to come here. So hopefully, the next couple of years, we should be in good shape in terms of getting some credible rights right on the parking lot.
Awesome. Thank you very much for sharing a little bit more about the event, and we know it's wildly popular and a really cool extension of your market into the community, and I'm very supportive. I think it's great.
The City of St. Paul Police, as last year saying that even though concrete barricades have not been introduced, has not been in the ordinance, they ask us if we allow, if we are willing to take that burden to have concrete blocks right on streets so that people don't drive right onto it, and we agreed, and the City of St. Paul, especially the police, is really appreciative, and they're in support of the festival.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Prince would move to close the public hearing? Any, well, close the public hearing and approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 27, Resolution Public hearing 19-180, approving the application of the Asian Economic Development Association for sound level variance to present amplified music and performances in the parking lot at 422 University Avenue West and Western near Sherburne Avenue on Saturday, July 6 and Sunday, July 7 for the Little Mekong Night Market.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 28, Resolution Public hearing 19-177, approving the application of Water Lantern Festival for sound level variance to present announcements and amplified music on Saturday, June 29 at Failon Park Beach House for the Water Lantern Festival's Twin Cities.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Busuri moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye. Seeing none, Mr. Busuri moves to close the public hearing and approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 29, Resolution Public Hearing 19-179, approving the application of Anderson Race Management for sound level variance to present outdoor music and announcements for the Jamaican Outreach 5K on Sunday, June 30th at Phelan Park.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Busuri moves to close the public hearing and approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 30 through 59 are before you for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Ms. Marmend.
Good afternoon, I'm requesting that you pull item number 34 from the consent agenda for separate consideration.
All right.
Item number 34, RLHVO 19-22, appeal of Philip Allen to a notice of condemnation as unfit for human habitation and orders to vacate at 1699 Clear Avenue.
Ms. Marmend.
If you will indulge me for just a moment, I would like to bring up photographs of the property. Council President Brenmo, council members, what you're looking at is an order to vacate a property that was issued on July, excuse me, on June 5th of 2019. The Department of Safety and Inspections gave five days for this property to be vacated, given the conditions. The worst of the conditions are found in the basement, where we did have two people sleeping, and there is no egress window, there were no appropriate smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and the space is definitely got in excess of accumulation of clutter, I would say borderline hoarding. Notably, materials are also stacked against the sewer pipe, against the water heater and other facilities down there. This makes the entire structure endangered. It's not just for the sleeper in the basement that this presents problems, but also for the house as a whole. Mr. Philip Allen, who is the appellant and the owner occupant, rents out bedrooms within his home, he has for a number of years rented out the basement as a bedroom. This is the second tenant that he has indicated lives here. The space, he indicated in the hearing, has locks that are only operated by the occupant of that space, the owner does not have access to that space. Later in the hearing, he did say that he did, he contradicted himself, I'm not sure that that is the case. I'm also concerned with a locked space, there is access prevented from the other occupants of the house. If they need to reach the electrical service panel in particular, that's a fire code matter, you have to be able to get to the service panel that services your area. So that is troublesome as well. Given that this is a condition that has been brought about by the owner, that this is an ongoing problem, and that the order was issued originally on June 5th, I feel, I felt compelled at the June 11th hearing to tell Mr. Allen that I would recommend to the council that the property be in compliance or vacated June 20th, that is tomorrow. So this is a very straightforward denial of an appeal, which would mean that either this space needs to be cleaned out of occupants and materials so that it becomes co-compliant, or it needs to be vacated from the people living here in the time allotted. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them. There are photographs in your record, and I have a couple, I can bring up on screen here. You can see the space is dark, it is over full, and there is materials stacked up throughout that space. And again, the basement, as I said, is the worst of the problems, but there are other problems in the structure. There was exposed wiring in the operable smoke detector, and I, there again, the furnace, so you can see all of the utilities in the basement are compromised by having materials stacked against them.
And you said no egress?
There is no egress window for someone to escape in the case of fire. Basements are particularly scary places for people to be in a fire situation because of the way smoke accumulates within a basement, you've got a very low threshold. Right now, the only way out is up the basement stairs, and the sleeping is in the same room as the utility equipment, the heater, the water heater, the furnace, and so on, which are likely to be generators of the fire. They are certainly creating a higher hazard area than what a sleeping area should provide, or that a sleeping area should exit through on the way out of the house. So this is problematic in a number of ways.
Yeah, and we, as problematic as it is for residents, also our fire rescue team also then is subjected to that sort of risk and danger as well, so that's why we take this very seriously. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Marmend? No? Okay. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Why don't you come on up? You could, can you just wait till you get up to the microphone so we can?
Yes, I'm the owner, and I've been leasing it out for two years. The first time, it's not just one person who actually leased the bedroom and was allowed to sleep in, I use the basement as well. But all I'm requesting is more time, because of the tenant, tenant's in the basement, until he leaves, I won't be able to remove all that stuff. All I need to do is remove all the clutter and repair the leaks and get up to code, and then I can sell the property. So I'd like to request more time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Busuri, close the public hearing?
Yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails. Mr. Busuri.
So for the safety of the tenants that live upstairs, and the safety of anyone to live in that property, I believe we should clear it out by tomorrow. Many's had since June 10 to work on removing the tenants from downstairs. So I move to take the recommendation of the hearing officer.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is adopted.
I'm not aware of anyone else being here for our legislative hearing.
Okay. So we will take the balance of the legislative hearing consent agenda, which is items 30 through items 59 minus 34, which we just discussed. If there is anyone here to speak to items 30 through 50, I just said it, nine, this is your public hearing. All right. Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearings and approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
And we went a little long today, but I would like to make sure that I offer news from the wards, if people have things that they would like to share. So a lot going on, as we mentioned, with Pride this weekend in the cities. Mr. Tolbert.
Tomorrow, tomorrow is jazzed about Highland. Go to Langford Chiropractic Clinic, they host in their parking lots Highland Parkway in Cleveland, and we have jazz bands there, and it's part of the Jazz Festival, which is, I believe, happening this weekend. But they're interconnected, and it's usually a fun neighborhood event.
Great. Other news from the wards, Ms. Naker.
And Jazz Fest is happening this weekend.
This is, this warms you up.
The Highland event.
I figured you'd just talk about what's happening downtown.
We all love downtown. Any other news from the wards? Great. Seeing none, we will be in recess until 5:30. City Council is back in order, roll call.
Tolbert, Busuri, Jalali Nelson, Naker, Prince, Tao, Council President Brenmoen. Five present, two absent, being council members Busuri and Tao, and Councilman Tao has been excused.
Yes, welcome, people who are here tonight in the galley. It's nice to have you here, welcome staff and community members and stakeholders. We have nine items on our public hearing agenda tonight that we are going to work to get through in a timely manner. We have a few, we're going to begin with four ordinances, and then the city, we read our ordinances four times. The first and second readings are at 3:30, the third is the public hearing, and we hold at 5:30 to ensure that more people can attend if they like to contribute to the conversation, and then it is anticlimactic, but we don't vote until the fourth reading. So after the public hearing, we will lay the matter over for a final reading, which will be sometime next week. Following that, we have a few resolution public hearings to get through, including a parking permit, and other, looking at some vacation of private properties and other various items. On these, we will give up to 15 minutes, first side to just share their perspective, and then those ones we will be voting on tonight. So when you testify, if you could give us your name, the neighborhood that you live in, before you speak, and then at the end of your testimony, and we'll probably end up reminding you, because a lot of times people get done with their testimony and walk off quickly, but there's a ledger on either side of the podium where we'd like you to sign in with your full name and address and phone number, so we can add that to the public record. So with that, we will begin on item 60.
Item number 60, Ordinance 19-10, amending Chapters 63, 65, and 66 of the Legislative Code pertaining to solar and wind energy.
And I believe we're starting with a staff report. Welcome.
Council President, council members, good afternoon. I'll give a very brief introduction with a very brief timeline also, which is important for this project. Currently, the St. Paul zoning code allows solar installations as an accessory use as of right, which means without a permit, but does not allow community solar gardens as a principal use as of right, nor does it allow wind energy installations as accessory or principal uses. Without explicit text in zoning code regarding solar or wind uses, proposals for the construction of these systems are evaluated on an individual basis by staff through a process known as determination of similar use. In 2011, St. Paul Planning Commission initiated a zoning study of wind energy systems. In 2013, while staff was still studying wind energy systems, the state of Minnesota passed a suite of laws concerning community solar gardens. Staff incorporated the study of community solar gardens into its study of wind energy systems. In 2017, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and sent recommended zoning text amendments to the mayor and city council regarding both wind and solar energy systems. This text addresses height, noise, setbacks, flicker effects, airport hazards, and housing of electrical equipment. It also specifies in what circumstances a property owner must apply for a conditional use permit. In 2019, here we are today, staff reviewed the recommended zoning text amendments in consultation with local stakeholders, as well as with the city's chief resilience officer. The amendments have been edited, and a second version has been created and released for public comment at the city council public hearing. This second version is less burdensome to property owners who are interested in developing these energy systems than the first version, and encourages the development of alternative energy systems. And that's what's before us today. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Thank you, and we did, we had the unusual, we talked about it a little bit last week because we did the amendment, and so I appreciate your acknowledgement of that. So we are looking at the amended version with the modifications that came from really the community's input. All right, thank you. We will move on to our public hearing. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to lay the matter over. And close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the ordinance is laid over to June 26th for final adoption. Item number 61, Ordinance 19-32, granting the application of bylaw to rezone the property at 388 Minnehaha Avenue West from R4 Single Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential, and amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map.
All right, is there a staff report on this item? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to item 61? All right, seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, oh, I'm sorry, five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed and the ordinance is laid over to June 26th for final adoption. Item number 62, Ordinance 19-34, repealing Ordinance ORD 18-40, which amended Chapter 357 of the Legislative Code to regulate coordinated collection.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item?
I will speak.
Come on up.
Approaching.
Sure. And there wasn't a staff report, but just before you speak, so we're clear about what the item is before us, when, then, spring of this year, two petitions were presented to the city council, the first of which was accepted by the city council, and we agreed to repeal the ordinance. And so this is a perfunctory repealing of that ordinance, it is not related to the second petition.
Okay. I just want to voice support for that. So my name's Chris Holbrook, I live in the Midway in Ward 4, and would like you to repeal it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else here to speak to this item?
Yes, here.
Come on up. And if you're, if you're here to speak to it, you don't have to, you don't have to wait, just come on up along the side and we can speak to the item.
Good afternoon, Dave Bruderfeld, resident of St. Paul's Ward 4, McAllister Groveland Neighborhood. Thank you, Madam President and council members. The spirit of restoring at least some trash cart sharing is appreciated, giving back part of what we lost with the city's flawed trash program. Let the sharers go and their complaints go with them. But why stop there? Why not address a wider range of complaints by letting any citizen with complaint simply opt out? Besides the sharers, let the zero-wagers go and their complaints go with them. Let multi-unit self-select how many carts, if any, they need, and their complaints go with them. If a citizen will be absent, let them simply tell their holler to suspend without needing a note from their travel agent, their doctor, their mother, or whatever, and their complaint gone too. That still these price and cost- That's still these price and customer service concerns, but as a start, and the ability to opt out might encourage haulers to improve on those other concerns as well. The previous free-market approach, the city didn't need a complaint department, at least not for this matter. If someone wasn't happy with one hauler, there was always another. What about all the trucks? I don't know, our neighborhood solved that years ago by centering on one particular hauler, and yet we had better service and pricing as well. If the cities...
Sir, I recognize that you're probably aware of this, but I'm going to just advise you nevertheless that what we're talking about is repealing an ordinance that had to do with the licensing of garbage haulers. It has really nothing to do with the topics that you're sharing.
I get that, maybe I could sum it up. It appears to be a piecemeal approach to fixing one small part of it, and I'm saying I'd rather have a complete cure. Thank you for your time, goodbye.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else here on this item? If there's other people who plan to speak on this item, can you just stand up so we can get a sense of timing on this?
My name is Mary Gross, I live on Laurel Avenue in St. Paul. I think this amendment or ordinance is premature with all the turmoil right now that's going on with our trash collection system. To me, trash collection should not be an option. It is a city service like fire and police protection, water and sewer. Everyone has to pay for the common good. You can't go to the government here and say, "I'm sorry, I didn't use the fire department this year, so I don't want to pay that portion of my property tax." This is a service that the city needs for sanitary reasons, and everyone should contribute, and they do have a choice of a small cart, medium cart, or bigger cart. I unfortunately had the experience some years ago, somebody just dropped off a chest freezer filled with broken fixtures, light fixtures, fluorescent light fixtures, just put it in my driveway in the alley. And we had to pay, and pay a lot, because the fluorescent fixtures were broken and was contaminated with mercury. So this is the kind of thing that's happening, and that's why, for the common good, we need everyone to chip in and stop people from, have everyone have trash collection so they aren't throwing their trash in other people's property or parks, or playgrounds, whatever. And I went on Minneapolis's website, they charge about $30 some dollars a month, and but they do a lot more than we do, that includes organics, recycling, and you can put out two large items every two weeks in Minneapolis. But she said, every household has to have one container, there are no op-outs. And the lady also said that the only time they allow people to suspend trash collection is if they're going to be gone three months or more. So they don't allow people to do that. So again, if we want a good and sanitary city, everyone needs to chip in for organized trash collection.
Thank you. And I, and this, I don't, it's so in the weeds, but the, we are not repealing the ordinance that pertains to the collection of fees and that would touch the contract. This was a piece of the movement to coordinated hauling that dealt with licensing for haulers, and we agreed at that time that the change would be, would not impact the trash hauling system. So, very complicated and intertwined, but I appreciate your comments very much. So, if there's no one else here for the public hearing, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the ordinance is laid over to June 26 for final adoption. Item number 63, ordinance 19-35, amending chapter 357 of the Legislative Code to reflect current city practices.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the ordinance is laid over to June 26 for final adoption. Item number 64, Resolution Public Hearing 19-175, approving the petition of the Minnesota Transportation Museum to vacate a portion of Minnehaha Avenue in the area Block 1, Ashton and Sherburne Sedition.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. This may be a little controversial, but I live in Minneapolis. I am the secretary of the board of directors at the museum, however, so I feel that this is appropriate. I just want to thank the city council and city staff for their work on this vacation, and on behalf of the entire museum, thank you.
Thank you, and can we catch your name, please?
Ryan Heath, I apologize.
We need to know more than just Minneapolis, which we're actually cool with, but if you can sign in. And thank you for being here. Anyone else on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 65, Resolution Public Hearing 19-172, approving the petition of VC South Mall LLC to vacate a portion of the alley abutting lots 12, 13, and 14, Block 17 Summit Park Edition, and to St. Paul Ramsey County.
Ms. Naker.
Thank you. We did notice, and we will be holding the public hearing tonight, but afterwards, I do intend to lay this item over until July 10 to get some further questions answered from the city attorney's office. So, just wanted to say that now, since we won't be voting on it tonight, but look forward to hearing the testimony.
Okay, so this, your intention is to lay the matter over to July 10, in any case?
Right.
Because you have a few outstanding questions, but we are, but this is a public hearing?
Yep.
Because it has been noticed that way. So, if this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Come on up.
Thank you, Council President Bren Moen. Members of the council, my name is Mike Hadding. I'm an attorney with the firm of Stinson LLP, and I represent the owner of the property that's the petitioner in this instance. So I'm here to basically take any questions, or, you know, answer any questions or concerns of any of the council members here today.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Ms. Naker will move to lay the matter over to July 10? All right, is there any further? Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing and lay the matter over to July 10. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to July 10, and that would be at 3:30. Item number 66, Resolution Public Hearing 19-174, approving the petition of Raymond Station LLC to vacate a portion of Myrtle Street, abutting Lot 83 Hewitt's Outlots, 1st Edition.
Do we need a staff report on this, or no? All right, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 67, RESPH 19-165, approving the project to reconstruct the Summit Avenue Bridge over Idmell Road and the roadway approaches between Syndicate Street and Greggs Street.
Do we need a staff report? No? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 68, Resolution Public Hearing 19-191, expanding residential permit parking Area 8 to include Concordia Avenue, Carroll Avenue, and Engelhardt Avenue between Asbury Street and Paschal Street North.
So on this item, I'm going to have you hold up for just a second. On this item, item 68 and item 69 are, they're not the same, but they're somewhat related. And Mr. Tao is out today, so I'm going to look to Ms. Nelson when I say that, my understanding is that we are, we are planning to hold the public hearing because it's how it's been notified, but that the intention will be to lay both of these items over for one week. And I, because there's been concerns from the community, and there's a little more work that needs to be done on this before it moves forward. All right, and to provide the opportunity for Mr. Tao to participate. So, so we will, we will hold the public hearing, we will keep the public hearing open, and I just want folks that are here to testify on this to consider that there will be work that happens in the coming week, and that it may be worthwhile to keep your powder dry and testify next week, when we know what the final shape of this provision will be. You're welcome to testify, of course, it is a public hearing, but it sounds like there's going to be some room for change on these, so. Do we need a staff report? Okay, we would like a staff report on this item. So we're going to have staff give us a report.
Okay, so, if I may, Council President, just to make sure I understand then, so there's going to be another public hearing one week from today?
Yep, and that, the public hearing, so the intention will be to lay this, both items 68 and 69 over, and I'm saying that because everyone else here must be here for those two items, since that's the rest of the agenda. So, but that is the intention, and I think the, I'm sharing this now because there will be changes, and so it might be worthwhile waiting till we hear what the changes are to testify. But before you testify further, I need to get a staff report, so that the rest of the colleagues who don't have this issue in their ward get fully, a report from our staff. Okay?
Well, I was simply going to say that based on what you just said, I would prefer to hold off any statements that I might make until next week to have the benefit of reviewing whatever additional information there might be.
Okay, great. All right, well, we'll bring staff up.
I had an hour and a half to prepare for this, and there it is.
Well done. Well done.
Okay, so the same time next week, roughly?
3:30. It'll actually be at 3... Well, it has to be at 3:30 next week, there isn't a 5:30. So it'll be at 3:30 next week, which would be a reason to testify tonight. Yep, why don't we start, why don't we get a staff report first, and then we'll move on to items number 68 and 69?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. I'm Randy Newton with St. Paul Public Works, and I'm just going to give a brief staff report on the...
Randy? Randy, and you can just stand right between the two mics, and don't adjust them, and then it'll pick up your voice.
Thank you. So maybe just, I wanted to start with just a brief background of permit parking. I know many of you are familiar with this, but just the brief background is the permit parking program is defined in City Code, Chapter 164. It's my understanding, it's, you know, primary there for residential areas which are under intense parking pressure from non-residential uses. And it is a requister-based program with a petition process. And just sort of the brief process that we utilize for reviewing permit parking areas is a resident request. There is a minimum size requirement that needs to be met of eight block faces. We typically do a parking assessment. We gather, the residents will gather petitions from the areas affected by the parking area, the requested parking area, which would be a requirement of 75% of the properties would need to agree to the petition. This gets coordinated with the district council, and we did have a public hearing with the, not a public hearing, but a public meeting with the district council and got their input. And then we have a public hearing in front of the city council. So that's the brief background. In regards to Area 8, I will put up a map here that shows the proposed Area 8. I don't know.
Okay.
Turned the right way, or?
If you turn it, just two more turns now. There you go, and it'll zoom in on it. Yep.
So this is Area 8. So just to kind of, the background on this is, we did receive requests from residents. This was actually prior to the opening of the stadium. We worked with them, and they did fill out a petition for the area, and this area is defined, it's actually an existing Area 8, which is a small area here to the south, or sorry, to the south of Concordia and east of Snelling. The expansion would be a more substantial area that includes the blocks of Concordia, Carroll, Engelhardt, between Ashbury and Paschal. We did receive a petition, a completed petition, that included 85% of the signatures in the area. The requested parking restriction is comparable with what the existing parking restriction is, which is a no parking except by permit. We completed parking counts in the area, and during that, we did, we counted eight total counts, five during non-game times, and three during game times. And just to give a brief kind of overview of what we saw, this is a map, and this one is actually from a, I think it's a Saturday afternoon, and this is just an example of a non-event day. And what you can see is the green is kind of showing an area where there is ample parking available. The yellow is showing one that there, it's moderately parked. So during a non-game time activity, there is available parking in the area, but there is consistent parking. The second one here is a parking we did during, I think this was actually the first Allianz Field event, but I can tell you that all three events that we counted at were similar, and the area was essentially fully parked during that time. And that's sort of that red marking on the map. Following our parking review, we did take this to the district council and had a meeting with the district council, and got some public input. Based on that, the district council did support the Area 8 expansion. And I'm happy to talk about Area 4 now, or I can wait till the next?
Um, I think, why don't we take, I think it'd be helpful to take them separately. I think it'd be helpful to take them separately, if that's okay.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, does anyone have questions about Area 8? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go too far away. Okay. So, as we said, so this is a public hearing, and we're going to be taking testimony from people who are in support and people who are in opposition. And again, the intention will be to lay this matter over, Mr. Tao is not here today, and that was his request, and it also sounds like there's just still some unanswered questions and community issues that need to be resolved, so it's just not ready for a vote today. So why don't we start with people who would like to speak today at 5:30, because it is true, next week we will be hearing this at 3:30, that are here to speak in support of expanding the residential permit parking. If you'd like to speak in support of Area 8, please stand up. Okay? If you're here in opposition to Area 8 and would like to speak today, please stand up. So it looks like there's two, three people? Come on up to the, along the side, and we'll, we'll start the clock up. We do allow up to 15 minutes per side, not per person. Nope. Nope, just share your name and what neighborhood you live in, I think we're going to probably guess, and then sign in when you're done.
Okay, so my name is Joe Hughes, and I actually own property in the area. I live in Highland, but I own the building that the Neighborhood Cafe is in, 1564 Selby. I own the building that Firebox is moving into. I own the building that Augustine's is in, and then I have about 40 to 50 residential tenants within two or three blocks of Marshall and Snelling. So, I guess my concern is that the permit parking is just going to push the problem somewhere else, and we think it's going to push it further south. And that area by Selby and Snelling, like we already know, is, is very congested. It doesn't feel like allowing permit parking is consistent with the city's promoting of density on Snelling and on University. And their, you know, the A-line is on Snelling, the light rail is on University, all those things seem to be, you know, promoting more people coming to the area, and I don't think it's consistent with allowing people to privatize the public space in front of their house. So, and our big, so I guess I have my own issues with permit parking, but then I, separately from that, our main, you know, those 20 events a year, that's, you know, that's our biggest concern for the businesses. So I have seven retail tenants within that area, or with, you know, a few blocks south of that area. And I think I speak on behalf of the Business Association, which is... And I think I, I speak on behalf of the Business Association, which is 60 businesses. And our, our big concern there is just on those 20 events, it's already gonna, you know, further congest, a very congested area. So strongly oppose it, and these same views would be, you know, also for the, the Zone 4. So I'm not sure if I should come back up here for that or not, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And be sure to sign in. All right. Folks in opposition to Area 8. Welcome.
My name is Gail Winniger, and I own the building at Selby and Snelling. I'm also a St. Paul resident off of Summit Avenue. And I'm a counselor, college grad, so I grew up from the early 70s and, in that neighborhood. And my observation, both as a resident and a business owner and a member of the Business Association, is that we all share streets and we share space, and we'd like to be really good neighbors. And have been really impressed, particularly in our neighborhood where Selby/Snelling Business Association, that we've, we have worked really well with the neighborhood and businesses and neighborhoods, and even with the construction going on, et cetera. And my feeling is that if we jump this quickly from one change, let me just back up to say, I own a health club, and our business really is bringing people through change they don't wanna do. So if you can imagine, it's like, kind of like getting you to exercise. But, so in this change is, can we take some time before we jump the gun on trying to find a, you know, I feel the pain of the people who are experiencing with the initial games that things have changed, and parking has changed. But what I've also observed is, I sat out in front of my business one night when there was a game going on and asked people, "Where'd you park?" And people were parking down on Summit, they were parking on Grand and walking to the game, which I think is terrific for our neighborhoods. They are the kind of people you wanna have in your neighborhoods, you know, walking. And I think if we can hold off and just go through a year of the change of the stadium, but also as other things are, right now, for example, there's traffic is down to one lane on, on Snelling because of the construction of that. That will change. Many of these things are gonna be shifted around and will probably be improved upon. So as I speak, it's not necessarily that, is to not jump to solve the problem short-term and to really let things play out so that we can do a better strategy and more comprehensive strategy of how do we work on the, the parking issues. I've been in that neighborhood, I've owned that building for almost 30 years, and I've been in the neighborhood for much longer than that. And we always think that parking is an issue, and I think we need to just figure out how to share the streets better, so.
Thank you. Be sure to sign in. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Ed Conley, and I own where Patina's at and Snelling and Selby, that whole entire, it would be the northwest corners up to Frye. So I own all the houses, all the commercial buildings. I've owned a lot of that real estate for about 12 years, and I bought the, the Snelling/Selby building about 12 years ago, and that was our, where Patina's at, and that was condemned. And then I've just since just acquired all that real estate. So I've got about 120 units of apartments, commercial office right there. And then I own some buildings on Marshall and some stuff on Dayton as well, and further north on Snelling. And I, so I've talked to some of the tenants already about the permitting issue and stuff.
And are you a St. Paul resident as well?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm a St. Paul resident. We, my wife and I and our two kids live in Cathedral Hill.
Awesome.
And we've lived there for about 20 years. And I personally have done a lot of renovation in the cities, but, but the parking on that corner historically has been an issue. And it has, you know, the city's done several traffic studies of that issue when the entire, you know, O'Garees and all that stuff has been, gone up. And just, just talking to the different tenants, our commercials primarily, you know, especially the commercial and the residential, the, if the stadium's not there, the parking is a huge issue, right? So now with the stadium there, when there's already, they've had the few events that they've had there, it's really compounded that issue. There is a lot of foot traffic, you know, people park and, and they walk, and the, the weather's nice and stuff, but it's just, it's just one of these, our, my biggest concern is, just talking with, you know, like Joe and Gail and, and other business owners in the area, is it becomes a Pandora's box. It's like, so we expand the, the permit parking to, you know, the proposed expansion, and then it's, I can, I know, I can't guarantee it, but I can almost guarantee it, that you're gonna have that next group, that next tier of people standing in front of you and saying, "We want permit parking." And it's like, I, I thought that was one of the reasons we're trying to, you know, the bike lanes, the, the mass transit, you know, the light rail and stuff. And I just, I like the, the other two that are just before me. I strongly oppose it, not, not only just for myself, but for, I really feel like I speak for 125, 130 people that live right in that area for, so I just appreciate taking the time to think about it, and have a good evening. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak in opposition on Area 8? Okay. So seeing that there isn't, we will, Ms. Nelson will move to hold open the public hearing and lay the matter over to next week. And again, before we vote, this will be 3:30 next week. Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Five in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is continued to June 26 at 3:30. Item number 69, Resolution Public Hearing 19-189, creating residential permit parking Area 4 on Concordia Avenue and Carroll Avenue from Pierce Street to Snelling Avenue, and on Pierce Street and Frye Street from Carroll Avenue to Concordia Avenue.
All right. Let's get staff report version two for Area 4. Thanks for sticking around.
No problem. Good afternoon again. So similar to Area 4, or Area 8, we followed a similar process for Area 4 in going through the permit parking petition and request. So we did receive a request from the area and neighborhood. This one was a little bit different, and the, the request was for no parking from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. except by permit. This was not a 24-hour-a-day request. The map here shows the defined area, and this is a new permit parking area. It is to the south of Concordia and to the west of Snelling. It is essentially Carroll and Concordia between Pierce and Snelling, and then Pierce and Frye from Carroll to Concordia. We did receive a signed petition from 87% of the property owners or occupants in the area. And similar to Area 8, we did the, the parking counts. We did a total of eight counts, five during non-game time and three during game times. Here's an example of a, a game time, or sorry, a non-game time, and this is a, actually a Sunday afternoon. And I think it's fairly typical of a non-game time event. There is a little bit of pressure, or I think it's on Carroll, but otherwise, there's a lot of available parking in the area. I do think on, one thing I'd note that's a little bit different in this area is during the weekday, midday, Carroll was actually fairly heavily parked. But that was the only roadway in here that was sort of heavily parked during non-game times. Similar to Area 8 during a game time event, and this is a Sunday game, the area of the permit parking was fully parked, as well as the, the residential area to the south and west of the railroad tracks was also heavily parked during the game time. And similar, I'll just leave this up, actually, I'll put this one back up. Following our parking counts, we did go to the, the district council, have a meeting with them, and got their feedback. They again supported this, this permit parking area. The one request was they did suggest a seasonal parking restriction for this area from April to November. Otherwise, they supported the, the permit parking area. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Again, at the risk of repeating myself, the intent will be to lay this item over for one week, and we'll hear again at 3:30 next Wednesday. But in the meantime, for folks that are here and want to testify, we will start with people who are here in support of creating the permit parking Area 4. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sherry Hertzorn, and I live on Concordia Avenue in that Zone 4 there. And I'm here, I appreciate the concerns of the businesses that are adjacent to our community. However, we're here talking about what's happening in our neighborhood, and, and I can understand that, yes, parking will start spilling, and it already is. Every game, we've seen an increase in the parking in our neighborhood. The first game, people were following what the Minnesota United was asking, people were trying the mass transit, they were using the shuttles, they were trying those options, and we didn't see as much parking as you saw on that counting map. However, now it is parking so dense that they're parking up to the stop signs, blocking, partially blocking alleyways. And it's gotten to the point where people are having trouble just even getting around. And that, that is an issue. Also, the having people having loud arguments out in front of your house at the end of a game, or just having chats with each other. And I'm a big supporter of, of the soccer team and of the stadium itself. I just think that it went in without providing sufficient for the transportation needs of the people attending the games. Parking, everyone acknowledged, there wasn't enough parking for the people coming, but there was an assessment, oh, people will take the mass transit. Even with those numbers, there wasn't enough parking for the people that they expected to be driving. There wasn't enough capacity on the mass transit for the people to be coming and leaving, which is why we saw huge lines on mass transit, and why more and more people are driving, because they got frustrated with the mass transit. There wasn't even enough parking spaces for all the bikes, for the people who ride their bikes on in, and the estimated number of people who would be biking on in. I don't have those numbers, I know they're out there in public record, but I, in looking at those numbers, those weren't considered to begin with. And what I'm seeing in my neighborhood is an increase in parking, an increase in people not parking according to the, even the laws as they exist, and it's not safe. I've seen pedestrians almost get hit by cars trying to make turns, who get frustrated that they can't make the turns, because the police are rightfully focused on the Snelling Avenue area. But there's pedestrians all over in our neighborhood, and it's not always being watched. I've seen people pay, getting people to pay to park on grass lots, that, you know, which I know is not according to the rules, but I see it. So there's more and more of this happening, and there's nobody looking at what's happening in our neighborhood. What we're asking is so that we can be able to go out of our homes, to go pick up our child from the, from the school, or from their job, and come home and be able to park without getting into verbal altercation with somebody who's trying to park for soccer, as happened with one of my neighbors. That sort of thing is happening, and I'd like the council to please consider that when they're considering the parking permit. Unfortunately, we'll not be able to come during the next hearing because it is during business hours, so that's why I'm here today.
Great. And your comments are part of the public record, so thank you for that. I just, just for time management purposes, I wanna understand how many more people wanna testify, 'cause the, we have about 11 minutes, and I, I didn't wanna accidentally cut somebody short 'cause I didn't know they wanted to testify. So three, three more people? Okay. Come on up. Oh, four. Yeah, if you're gonna speak, if you could just kind of line up there so we can, it helps me help you manage your time. So come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Donnette Lincoln, and I have property on 1607 Carroll. And I'm gonna be really brief because I'm gonna try to be here next time, 3:30. But I did wanna make an acknowledgement that I feel that a lot of people did show up here today and are kind of reserving their statements now because of that, but there's gonna be people who are here who made a commitment to come today, who will not come next week, and unfortunately, that's unfair.
And they, they can testify.
I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm just making a point that it is more convenient at 5:30 to speak than it is at 3:30.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna pause you there, 'cause I, I totally agree and understand, and I think that it's a fair statement, but I do wanna remind everybody who's here that speaking in front of the council at the microphone is one way to reach us, but you can also send an email. And to reach all the council members, you can make a phone call, and that information will get into the public record. So if you have something to add once, if changes are proposed, you're certainly welcome to contribute in one of those other ways as well, and those are also part of the public record.
I understand that, and I also know human, and human behavior and nature, and what's easy and what's not easy, and how much time people are willing to designate. I know all of that as well. So I just wanted to make a point that, what I just said, so whatever. The other question I had was, these changes that you refer to, are they something that we are gonna be privy to, or, and at what point?
I can speak to Councilmember Tao's office, but we were asked to give time, just because he's not here tonight, to be able to make any such changes. So I don't wanna speak on behalf of something I don't know about. For myself, I am appreciating the extra time to understand the complexities behind this request, because we have received a lot of feedback on all sides of the issue. So, I'm sorry, I don't have more of an answer for you, but it's kind of not my question I can speak to, if that makes sense. But that's part of why we're laying it over. Those, the council member, council member who is here, who would maybe be able to say something isn't.
Right. But he, is he for the Section 8 or 4?
We're working on them in tandem, because they're kind of related to the same issue, and we wanna make sure there's consistency and a coherent strategy around them. So it's, for myself, I am in listening mode. For him, I think the time request is to accommodate him not being able to be here.
So any proposals, we're gonna know that when? Any changes?
I mean, I can't speak to another council member's timeline. I hope to communicate very proactively if I were to do anything, so.
Well, if the meeting is in one week, are we gonna have time to allot understanding what the changes are and where do we find those changes?
Well, my understanding is that with every issue that we ever do, we have Legistar, and we upload, you know, any possible adjustments, so we always work to make sure those are communicated. Ms. Naker?
So can I have an answer, please? Because you're talking-
One moment, okay.
You're talking about that there may be changes, and now you're not giving access to that.
I'm gonna try to answer your question.
Okay.
This is actually not a Q&amp;A session. It's a public hearing, and I understand your confusion. So we're gonna try to answer your question. Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I, I think what you're hearing is that these are complicated issues, and we need to take time to understand them. We also, if we don't have a solution figured out far in advance of the next public hearing, I know all of us are off, are always open to the feedback that folks who are just seeing the information also need more time. So sometimes what we'll do is if we don't have something put together in time for you to have a week's worth of time to look at it before next week, we, we are open to testimony that there wasn't enough time to look at it, and we can lay it over again. But I think what you're hearing is, tonight, we don't know, and that doesn't mean that only next week is going to be the opportunity to look at it.
Well, I'm just commenting on something that was said, and so I'm trying to clarify for everyone here-
I think to the-
-what that means.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Is there any time?
Absolutely. There's 10 minutes. Can we move on to the next speaker?
I just wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
I, what I heard was that there are gonna be changes in the plan, that what is before us tonight is not what will be before us next week. So I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is that true for both 4 and 8? Or is, is it, is one going through some kind of reconsideration? I mean, I recognize that everything that comes before us can be changed, but what I heard at the beginning of the hearing was that we have to postpone this until next week because changes are being made. So I think it's a reasonable question.
All right. Thanks, thanks for making that clarification. I guess the challenge that I'm personally having in chairing this meeting is that the request was made by Councilmember Tao to lay the matter over for a week because he was still talking to community members, and there might be changes. I don't know anything more than that. I just am honoring his request because he's not here and I cannot speak on his behalf. It's possible that what comes before us next week is exactly the same. It's possible that there'll be some changes, but I don't know. I just know that Mr. Tao- I just know that Mr. Tao requested a one-week layover. And Ms. Nelson, because the two matters are very closely related, has also agreed to extending the decision for one week, so that there is some continuity between the two decisions, if that helps. And I think, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify.
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Sharon Overbaugh, and I live on Carroll. And I totally understand where the business people are coming from, totally understand. I love Snelling and the Selby area shops, but where I have the problem, I live on Carroll Avenue, and during game day, it's really sad when you have, don't have off-street parking, and you do shopping, and you have to park, you know, in an area where it's not even close to your home and try to carry groceries, because you don't have a way to get stuff in your house. But I have some elderly neighbors that can't even park by their house, and they don't have off-street parking. And I don't know if people realize, we're not asking for permit parking on both sides of the street, just one side of the street, for a limited time. And so I seriously don't think we're asking for a lot, and we're just looking out for each other, you know? And one more thing is that somebody did make a comment, I believe, earlier, that, you know, if we have, allow for permit parking for our neighborhood, well, maybe another neighborhood might ask for that, but the thing is, is we're asking for it. And, you know, I'm thinking about the present, so.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you so much, and thanks for signing in. All right. If you want to speak in opposition, or in support, sorry.
My name's Laura. I live on Carroll and Frye. And I guess a lot of the issues that I've been seeing is, you know, similar to my neighbors, and it is hard when you have to plan your day around when there's soccer games. It's, you know, that's obviously unfortunate, and I know the soccer stadium is going to bring a lot of great things into the neighborhood, but it's, you know, it's frustrating when people aren't parking legally, they're parking in front of fire hydrants, they're parking in front of, you know, stop signs. And then when the police are in the area, they tell us that it takes too long to write tickets, because they're not parking enforcement. That just happened two games ago. The police were there, and there were, you know, countless people parked unlawfully, and they said, "Well, parking enforcement's already done for the day, and it takes us too long to write tickets." So then they just left. So I don't think that it's, you know, even if we don't do the permit parking, it's not really sending a good message to the soccer fans that if you are going to park in our neighborhood, you need to park legally. And they're not even doing that, so it's not, you know, we're not even, we're not accomplishing anything if we don't have permit parking, and if we're not enforcing the laws in our neighborhood. It's just, I'm fearful that it'll just turn into a free-for-all if people aren't abiding by the laws. And, you know, that's unfortunate to see, and there hasn't been any issues yet in our neighborhood, but I, you know, I don't know if, how long that's going to continue, that, you know, what if somebody does break the law further than just parking in front of the stop sign? And it's, you know, it's just unfortunate that we have to coordinate our lives around the soccer game, and, you know, that's really like no way to live your life. And when you buy a house in a certain area, you don't plan on that being an issue. And I have heard, I haven't experienced any inconsiderate soccer fans, but I know my neighbor was swore at by somebody, because they were, you know, trying to make sure that she had a place to park when she was back from running errands, and, you know, somebody was, you know, like, young kids were cussing at her, because they were trying to like, make sure that she had a place to park when she got home, and, I don't know, it's all just kind of a bummer, because I feel like bringing it into the area should have had more of a positive impact and everything, and it's really just impacting all of us poorly, and making me resent the team being here. And that's it.
All right. Anyone else here in support? Okay. We will move on to folks who are here in opposition. We reset the clock.
Good evening, Council Leader, Council, Council Pre-... Hello? And my name is Bill Corcoran, and I am third generation St. Paul. I live, moved into Goodrich Avenue in our duplex, my wife and I, in 1991, and have been operating a business since 1996 in St. Paul. We purchased, if I may, if I can somehow-
So if you, right next to you, there's a wooden-
Oh, okay.
Yep. And if you put it in the square, there's actually an overhead camera that'll get it. Yep.
Is that oriented right? Okay. Great, thank you. So I'll be brief, it's getting late. Purchased this building at 1650 Carroll, and we are between Pierce and Frye. And, you know, took the mortgage out and everything, and stayed in St. Paul, two miles away. Instead of going to a suburb, I thought this, you know, makes, this is good, it's locality, it's St. Paul, and operated our commercial general contracting business out of this for, since 2001. And then we ended up purchasing the building next door, Schuster's Printing Building, in 2008. And so went deep into debt with the banks and everything, with the belief of, you know, we can own and operate businesses in St. Paul. And so now, you know, being some 20 years older almost, it's worked out well, but parking is a commodity. It's cherished, and I have a lot of respect and empathy for our neighbors, most of which I know that are on the north side of Carroll Avenue. I know the petition through the district ward was started at the time of the soccer stadium, but also about a year ago is when it started. And this building here, we started out with a third of it being rented to All Energy Solar. Then they took a half of it. Then they took, you know, over two-thirds of the building. And the reason I reference this, not to get long-winded, I think it's a relevant point, they went from about a 40-person company to 160. With that, in the last seven years that they were a tenant of ours, a commercial tenant, they started kind of inundating the neighborhood with trucks and cars, and I felt the pressures, especially the last two years. And it's a challenge to solve that problem, and we did everything within this non-parking area with the railroad tracks behind us and stuff to try to satisfy it. They've now since moved out two months ago, so I think if one were to go by there during off-game days, the neighbors will not have, and I would hope they would agree with this, because I see it, because I'm there daily, the neighborhood does not have a lot of employee parking inundated around both sides of the tracks and everything. So I think if we did a survey of this area now, it would be a little less impact. I think 20 games, so that's one piece of this. So I'm sitting on a vacant building right now, and with this causes hardship. I have one of our tenants here, Minnesota Alternatives, are a bit concerned as well, because parking is such an issue, we don't have an alley, and that puts a lot of pressure on owning and operating business in St. Paul. I also took the initiative to walk through our other commercial neighbors in Ward 4, which Ms. Nelson's our ward, and I've gotten signatures from the owners of Cooperative Plating, Total Tool Supply, Minnesota Alternatives, all in this area that are not in support of permitted parking. Even though it doesn't, it's not on the south side of the street, my concern would be, with everyone paying their $15 for their parking permits, those who don't have parking permits between those hours of 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., those are tough hours. It's a whole day, it's not even, you know, that, so now what I'll have is guests and visitors from people across the streets and down the street, then it becomes a little adversary relationship, instead of what I considered a good neighborly relationship. So I can't apply for permits. Our commercial properties cannot apply for permits, so I'll end up getting guests and visitors and the soccer crowd taking over what little parking spaces I have available. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're still hearing from people in opposition.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Nguyen, and I'm actually from Minneapolis again. But I'm actually here representing Mental Health Resources. We are located at 1650 Carroll Ave. The parking permit zoning plan, if implemented as stated, will have a negative effect on the people we serve at our outpatient substance use disorder clinic. Without options for parking permits for MHR clients and/or staff, and with no parking restrictions on the side of the street the clinic is located, guarantees a parking problem for both our staff and clients. We implore the council to find a solution that does not have a daily negative effect on the residents of St. Paul to receive needed health services. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition today? Okay. So then, seeing none, Ms. Nelson will move to lay the matter over for one week and hold the public hearing open.
Yep.
Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Nelson?
Thanks, everyone, for being here today. I really appreciate the chance to hear from folks directly on all sides of this issue. For me, I just want to reiterate the point that was made earlier, that there are ways to reach our offices and to share more. I encourage you, if you know somebody who wasn't able to come tonight and wants to weigh in, to send a note to us. We can be reached at ward4@ci.stpaul.mn.us. Managing the transition to and through Allianz Field has been one of the top things my office has taken on since getting here, and we're working really hard to find solutions that are going to meet everyone's needs in a way that is fair and reasonable, given that we are in a moment as a city that's a diverse, vibrant urban environment, that we have the most transit-connected soccer stadium and sports stadium in the entire state of Minnesota, and that we're trying to grow our ways to help folks get around safely. So we're looking at it from all angles. I appreciate people coming out, I just want to make that known. Please keep communicating beyond tonight, and look forward to seeing some of you back next week and continuing to talk.
And I'd also say on your motion, that one thing that I heard a few people say tonight, which is concerning to me, is the lack of enforcement. And I think if we, that regardless of what expansion happens or doesn't happen, that we need to make sure that there is a method in which our law enforcement officers can enforce the laws in the area, which sounds like in some ways would handle a lot of the problems that we're dealing with, if we're having, you know, cars parked up too close to the stop sign, or blocking alleys or driveways, and that is a problem, and it's not what our standard is, it's not what we would like to see or hear, and so we'll take that information back. And I think it's important that we heard that today. And I also think that the timing is good. We are going through a transition, and if that's something that's emerging as a problem, is parking enforcement around the stadium on game days, then we need to tackle that. So I appreciate hearing that as well. Other comments on the motion from Ms. Nelson? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is continued to June 26 at 3:30.
All right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything else to come before us? Seeing none, we're adjourned.